To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wanted to make one quick note, if that would be okay, that if you would indulge, we go ahead and do the Otterman Library presentation right after we have the public comment about agenda items. Is that okay with council? Okay. We're going to make that slight adjustment in the meeting schedule. But first off, we have our auditor's financial report.
All right. The report is in your packet, of course. And you see, we began 2021 with a general fund cash balance of $14,988,895. With miscellaneous revenue, property tax, and deducting the circuit breakers, we have total available beginning of the year of $66,739,081. We deduct the encumbrances, the budget, the minimum balance, and then add back in our projected unspent budget. We had an uncommitted funds balance of $6,120,963. So far this year, we have granted additional appropriations of $1,676,422, with $42,413 included in today's agenda's requests. So our available balance right now to the general fund is $4,308,457. The next page, a couple pages, are the general fund revenue summary. I don't really have a lot that to report on. The only thing that I think I had marked was down 0411 Sheriff inmate housing. We do get one large check now each year from the state, and I believe that was about $525,000. And we received like $575,000 almost on the month. So we have received more for inmate housing than what we had included in the budget. So that is a good thing to go over on that way. The next page, we have the fund balances. The general fund, you see, we took in about $2 million of receipts as the fund 1,000, and dispersed a little bit more than $4 million. So our ending balance is $15,926,138.77. Moving down the line a little bit here, the next one I had marked was 4709, which is the health insurance rainy day fund. And just mark that one so you can see that we did disperse the $1 million out of the health insurance rainy day fund to set up the fund which is down there, 4718, the workers' comp oops, fund, since we're going to now be self-insured on that to put some cash in there to be able to operate as we go forward. So we do now have $2 million. We have $3 million as the minimum balance in that fund, and we probably need to adjust those sometime down the line here. 4710 is the regular health insurance fund. And in the month, we did receipt in about $100,000 more than what we distributed. So that's the first time we've done that in a few months. But we still have a really comfortable $8.8 million of cash in that fund. Let's see if I had anything else marked. I'm not sure I did. So I think that is all I had. If there's any questions.
Hearing none. We'll move on to our treasures report. No, we don't.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Interest for July was $84,794.34. That's on $143 million in the various banks and investment companies. Nothing significant changed as far as distribution of where the monies are held there. General fund receiving $56,124.48 of that. And if you'll see, if you'll notice on the last line, Fund 8950, since we mentioned at the last meeting that that no longer retains its own interest, but we'll go to the general fund. There was about $12,000 there that went to the general fund for July. Total interest to date is $456,109.89. And I hope to come to budget hearings with a more fresh estimate for this year and next year. So that's all I have as far as interest.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have any public comment about our agenda items before us this morning. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go on to our Otterman Library Resolution Number 21, 2021-25-CL. Good morning. Good morning.
Here we go. Can you hear me okay? Latisha Provo is the library director, and she's going to describe the project a little bit. And then I have Kristen McClellan from Ice Miller, who is bond counsel for this. And if we need to get into the weeds of how this is set up, she would be answering those questions. And then Sean McGill will be, from Baker Tilly, will be answering questions that you may have about any financial concerns or how the finances for this project is laid out. The library has purchased adjacent real estate to the existing library to build in addition that will have some meeting rooms. And I'll let Latisha Provo describe the demand for that because there's been unusually high use of the library, especially during the past two years by many groups, not just the library, but outside groups as well. And one other part of this, one other aspect of this project is the property that was next door was an old gas station back in the day and garage. It's a big brick warehouse that has a canopy over a fuel island. And that was just shuttered and has been used for storage for the last like 50 years. And they, the owners were trying to market that property, and the public library got an interest in that because of how heavily the building was going to be used. And so they made arrangements, or we made arrangements with the owner. We purchased it for $1. We had an environmental survey prior to that, and there was some contamination from a leaking underground storage tank. And the library would qualify for a grant to remove those tanks. And so we were in a position to do something that the owner wasn't going to do on that property. So in addition to scratching an itch that the library had, it is literally at the downtown main intersection of Otterman. It's Main Street and Oxford Street, which is old US 52. It is right on that corner. And so it's just literally next door to a couple of businesses and the Newtown Hall. So I mean, it's right in an area that is pristine, and it needs to be pristine and well-used by the public. And so without further ado, let me ask Latisha Provo to come up and describe the need for that project.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank you for coming to my daughter's 14th birthday party. She's here with me today. She gets to experience not only this, but a state board of account exit interview after this, and a library board meeting tonight. So I know how to rock birthday parties. So like Judd said, thank you, Judd. I'm Latisha Provo. I'm the director of the Otterman Public Library. I've only been there, I'm going on my fifth year. We have grown patron-wise, foot-traffic-wise. And I guess the numbers that I have for you, that I always, when I introduce the library, I always talk about all the things that we're doing and all the interesting things that we have to check out, and what libraries are doing all across the country. And the most impressive numbers that I have right now is what we did during COVID. We were only closed, like actually closed for the two weeks, and then we opened to limited services, and then we fully opened. So during COVID, we checked out 14,348 items. We had 52 new patrons. We had 90 live and recorded videos available on Facebook and YouTube. Our Wi-Fi was available 24/7, and we had e-learners lining our sidewalks and curbs, sitting in parked cars out in our parking lot, utilizing our library. We had 234 in-person programs, with our biggest programs, of course, being Halloween and Christmas. We brought in 291 trick-or-treaters and 114 kiddos and families to get their picture with Santa and the reindeer. Most impressive was our conference room use. More people than ever have needed our space. Our meeting rooms in 2020 were used 88 times by 2,368 patrons. And some of those uses, some of the groups that use our libraries include Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Rotary, American Legion, Sheltered Reality, which is a drum line that my daughter is also involved in. They practice their drums in my library. Yes, it gets loud. We're a polling site, so we had our election there. School board meetings, band boosters, PTO. KA Components is a local business in our town. They use our services for training and for proctored exams. We've had Otterman alumni meetings there, Benton Soccer Association, tutoring, tricappa, town water meetings, Benton and Tip Canoe 4-H groups, open houses, grad parties, birthday parties, baby showers, wedding showers, homeschool groups, core-ordered supervised visitation. And we also contract with the University of Huntington. We have a student that's doing her capstone project at our library. So to say we are limited in space as far as conference rooms is an understatement. We have our conference room checked out all the time either with our in-house programs or with groups that are coming into our library. So some of the things that we are hoping to use the space for, that we will be adding on, we're working with Purdue and having some, there's 10 to 15 clubs that are working with esports right now. And esports is hopefully going to grow exponentially in Purdue. And so we have people that are going to come from Purdue and teach esports at our location. We're hoping to work with the high school and have some 3D printing capabilities and things like that in our library. We're hoping to engage some of the kiddos that have been sitting at home playing video games, not going out, and we want to engage them in the community. We have Justin here also from Keystone Architect. When I explained to him what our project was, one of the main things that he saw, like Judd said, were on a main corner there. And what he saw was to turn our library around and make that the face of our library, where right now that would be the backside, but there's a building blocking it. So he saw the need to engage with our community. And that's what I've seen the last four or five years that I've been at the library, is engaging with our community from the inside. And he saw it externally. So we're hoping to do both things now. If you have any questions, I think that Baker Tilly is going to talk next. And if you have any questions for me, I'm here, and I have a picture of the drawing of what Justin saw as his hopes and dreams for engaging with the community, if you'd like to see any of that. Do you have any questions? Yes.
It's more impressive with the large, but here it is. This is our existing building. So this is where our parking is currently. This orange section would be our added-on section. And then this area is where the building currently sits that would be demolished, and that would become a parking lot. So as you come in on the main street, this would be the
Visibility awareness. That's awesome.
This would be what we would add on, so that's what And facing the
Very impressive. Okay, thank you.
You say there's a building that have been blocking the view on that one side?
Yes.
It's a building that's considered a brown field. And that's the one that we've gotten grants about the tanks were taken out.
I have a presentation I'd like to distribute to the press, all right? Council members, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning. The library, Otterman Public Library, will be requesting the council approve the issuance of bonds in the amount of $1.37 million. The presentation in front of you summarizes the financial parameters that are included in the resolution. And so I will go through this. Please feel free to ask any questions. So a little bit of background, the library currently has one bond outstanding that is a first mortgage refunding bond that was issued in 2013. Payments of around $95,000 last year and this year. And then next year, that drops just below $70,000. And those bonds will fully mature in budget year 2022. Slide three just shows a visualization of the numerical figures on slide two. Slide four shows a calculation of the general obligation bonding capacity. As I'm sure you're well aware, taxing units in Indiana are bound by law not to incur general obligation debt above. For libraries, the calculation is the certified net assessed valuation divided by three multiplied by 2%. So as you can see, the library's general obligation bonding capacity is approximately $650,000, which is insufficient to meet the needs of the library's desired project. So for that reason, the library is looking at issuing first mortgage bonds similar to the ones that they had refunded in 2013. Slide five is probably the most relevant slide to what we're talking about today. The repayment term, just under 20 years, approximately 19 years and one month. We've assumed cost of issuance and an underwriter's discount for the project of not to exceed $182,125, which leaves approximately $1.187 million available for construction and renovations. The total estimated interest expense on the $1.37 million borrowing amount is $442,972. And that's based on estimated coupons or interest rates of 3%. The debt service tax rate, the library is not anticipating an increase to its current debt service tax rate. Currently, the debt service tax rate is just above 10 cents. And the library, after issuing these bonds, anticipates maintaining that same rate through 2039. The, as I'm sure you're well aware, tax rates are a function not only of the budget, but also of the certified net assessed valuation. So the tax rates that you'll see illustrated in this presentation are based on the current net assessed valuation with no growth assumed next year or thereafter. So with all that, the debt service fund tax rate impact compared to this year is estimated to be zero. Slide five shows a chart similar to what you previously saw. However, this has the adblocker and property tax first mortgage bond series 2021 structured on top of the existing debt in 2022, and then maturing in budget year 2040. You'll notice an increase, rather substantial increase, in 2022 to the payments due to the retirement of the old debt, which was subject to a higher permissible cash balance in the debt service fund. The DLGF will require that fund spend down a portion of its cash balance. So in doing that, we're able to accommodate a higher payment with the same tax rate. Slide seven is just a numerical representation of the data behind the chart. As you can see, we're estimating that lease rental payments of just above $100,000 through 2039, with the remainder being paid in budget year 2040. That concludes my financial presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Any questions from council?
So you mentioned that the net assessed valuation, you were expecting it to be flat. Is that what's been happening in the past, or what's been the trend in the community?
The trend has been growth. We assume no growth, just to be ultra-conservative.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, I need a motion for the resolution.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve Resolution 2021-25-CL approving issuance bonds and appropriation for Otterman Library. Any further discussion? Okay, yes. I guess auditor reminded me, there's a slight revision, Judd, if you could address that.
Just the dates of the publication in the two newspapers. I gave Mr. Plantanga the correction and what it is. It was published on July 28 in the Benton Review and on July 29 in the Journal and Courier. And otherwise, the resolution hasn't changed.
Yes.
And a similar resolution was approved by Benton County on July 15, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you. So noting those changes.
And when I do send this round for signatures, what I'll probably do is have you sign the one that we had in here. That signature page is a little different than what they had. Just so, anyway, I'll have the new and the old. We just signed the old where it was signed here. I think everything will be good.
Okay. Any problem with those date changes, Kathy or Ben?
No.
Okay. So council clear that that's the only changes on the final resolution? Okay. Do we need to do roll call on this one, Bob? Okay, so we just voice vote. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, which also includes the meeting minutes from our July 13 meeting. Is there any items that need to be removed or for discussion from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Hearing none, no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Maybe I should have brought this up beforehand, but it's a little addition to the consent agenda that I don't know if the sheriff or anyone wants to comment on that. But we have a transfer that, if I can get my fingers to work right here.
Oh, that was sent to us in email.
Yeah, there's a transfer from full-time in lit public safety down to, from full-time to the public safety line. And I don't know if the sheriff or anybody wants to come and speak about this, but there was an opportunity to purchase something that we didn't have money available for.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, these are so we can purchase AEDs. A good number of our AEDs are outdated, don't work. They're basically paperweights. This gives us the opportunity to purchase enough to outfit our department and all the other units that are in the county buildings that we are responsible for.
And it was a cheaper price for right now, right?
For right now, but in talking with Commissioner Brown, which makes sense, we need to look at, do we buy 40 of them all at once, and then they all go bad all at once? So that doesn't make any sense. And then we're sitting back here in however many years. So we got to look at that. I told Melissa about that.
Okay. So maybe you'll do fewer and try to space them out?
Yeah, I need to talk to her about, because it does make sense. We know if we get 40 right now, we replace ones that don't work, and then we have 20 sitting in storage or whatever that number is, they're all going to go bad at the same time. It doesn't make any sense. So we will look into it.
So might be fewer based upon the ones that aren't working now?
Right.
Okay.
What is the life of them usually?
You know what? I don't have any idea. I know mine's about 20 years old. I don't know exactly what the life is. It depends on, you have the batteries, and in our case, they just aren't making the batteries anymore. The patches that go on, they just don't make them anymore. So I think in a sense, they'll last forever as long as you have the equipment to keep them going. And in our case, what we have, we don't have the batteries and we don't have the patches.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions if there's?
So is this part of the consent agenda that we're adding? Or I'm confused as to what?
It wasn't in the consent agenda, because this just came up in the last few days. So it was after the packet was out. So
Okay.
So should we do this as a separate motion then?
It wasn't in the packet, so I would think a separate motion.
And then it sounds like he's changing it. So
Which we just learned yesterday.
You still want them to get the money now to give you the ability to buy some?
Yeah, this has been something we've been working on for a couple of weeks. Melissa's been working on it to save us money. She found a way to save us money. But then we talked with Commissioner Brown, who has a little bit more experience in that. It makes total sense to not purchase everything all at once around the same issue. So it's just something we need to
But you might want to purchase some.
Oh, yeah, we absolutely need some.
Okay, so what does he need from us, the council today?
Well, we're just transferring money. We've got a lot of money in full-time employees in lit public safety that is not going to be needed because those positions won't fall. So we're just moving this down to a line where they can purchase these, as many as they need. And they could be purchasing 40 if they needed to with this transfer. But I'm sure you want
We'll give it back.
Yeah, it's going to stay within the lit public safety, so it's not going to go anywhere if they don't use it. So.
So should we probably have a motion separate from the consent agenda to approve the transfer? Doug?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the transfer from lit public safety. And I don't know the two line items, Bob, because they're not in front of me. But you could scroll back up. Yeah, it was personnel to, full-time personnel to lit public safety. Capital outlay, okay. Safety equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you, Chair.
You want me to stay here for the next, or?
No.
We'll wait.
Superior Court II is our first additional appropriation. Do I have a motion for that one?
Yes. Mr. President, I move to approve the additional appropriation for Superior Court II from the general fund of $15,000.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional fund appropriation for Superior Court II for jury expenses. Discussion.
Good morning, everybody.
Welcome, Judge.
Steve Meyer, Judge of Superior II. I'm here asking for additional appropriation for jury expenses of $15,000. Initially, we received an appropriation of $10,000. That's usually what we receive every year, in addition to $10,000 as part of jury pay. The situation we find ourselves in this year is we've exhausted both funds. We're down to only about $800. We have so far conducted 11 jury trials this year. By comparison, last year, which was the height of COVID, we did 10 jury trials, we were able to squeeze them in. And then the year before, in '19, we did 11 jury trials. So we are on pace to exceed our historic pattern of jury trials. We still have about 12 more scheduled for the end of the year, hoping to get that in. We're very bottlenecked, not only our court, all the other courts are, because of COVID. It really set us back. We couldn't do jury trials for the first part of this year and some other times last year during COVID as part of the Supreme Court rule. And so that has put us behind, but we are trying to catch up. But I find myself exhausting, exhausted the funds and certainly the work. We appreciate the work of the prosecutor's office and the public defenders and everyone else keeping at our pace with the jury trials. But we do need the additional funds. Just also let you know a little bit different, what we're doing with the jury trials is we're no longer using the Long Center, but we're using the courthouse now. Because of social distancing and such, we used Because of social distancing and such, we used to be able to cram about 50, 55 people into the large jury room on the third floor. So we call about 50, 55 people in for the, in the morning, and we can usually get a jury seated usually by the morning out of that 55 people. We can no longer get that many people in the large jury room because of social distancing issues, so we're finding we're breaking it up. So at least the upstairs courts, we still need about 50 to 60 people. We've been calling a little bit more because of COVID, we're finding people don't want to come in, or they're, you know, they're sick, or they've been exposed. So we're breaking it up, so we're bringing about 30 or 35 people in in the morning, 30 or 35 people in the afternoon, with the hopes that we seat a jury. So that delays our selection of the jury, but it requires us calling more people in. So we're spending a little bit more money paying them to come in for the day. Hopefully, that will kind of smooth out in the future. We're finding that there's less COVID concerns as we go through, but now with this surge, with the Delta variant, we don't know. So we're going to continue that practice for a while, but we are spending a little bit more money than calling in initially the people for the service, and so that's added additional cost to our expenses. With that, I'm open to any questions, appreciate your support.
Any questions for the judge? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Next, we have CLAF Burn Fund Appropriation 9144 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Basham, or Murray, or whoever it was that chimed in first, for the additional appropriation from Fund 9144 for $7,062 in safety. Sheriff, did you want to speak about this one? We're helping you out.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
We're going to use these funds to purchase 14 personal locator devices for Project Lifesaver. They're about $450 apiece, so it leaves us a little short, but we'll use our own funds to pay for the rest. But what that equipment is, if you've never heard of it, it's a program started under Commissioner Brown. There's a pattern here, if you've seen that today. Children and adults that tend to wander, the parents can contact, in this case Sergeant Kree now, he has a little, kind of an interview with them to see if they would fit our program. If they do, they put a transponder on their wrist. If they wander off, an alert goes out. To all of us, our dive team oversees it, but there's members from every agency in the county on the team, they go out and locate the individual, and it's been extremely successful. It's old technology, but it works. So this gives us the opportunity to purchase more of the locators, because we don't have any. And there's, I think there's 10 to 15 people. Between that number, they're on a waiting list, so this will help us get what we need.
So how many are being used now? There's 10 to 15 on waiting lists?
I think we have maybe, 27 is what I'm thinking. I'd have to ask Sergeant Kree, because we have some that they break and we weren't able to replace them, or people just aren't on the program anymore, but for some reason, the number 27 is in my head.
Okay. Any other questions? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have coroner additional appropriation.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the additional appropriation for the coroner in the total amount of $27,413. Discussion. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. The salary is going to go towards paying the deputy pay. I've worked with Michelle, we hope we've been able to plan this out. Right now, we have 334 cases. As of last year, the entire year, we had 385, so we're pretty far beyond where we were last year, but we're hoping if we stay on track, you won't see me on this again. And as far as the office supplies, that's going to help us. We're having to test more COVID to make sure that they're not COVID positive before we do an autopsy if they're suspected COVID, and we have to pay to have at FedEx down to Indianapolis. I'm currently working with my local hospitals to see if we can do that here in town and maybe save 20 bucks. So that's where we are right now, but that's what I'm hoping, we won't have to do any more than that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved, thank you. Next, we have health donation fund appropriation.
I'll make a motion for the Health Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of $367.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the donation fund appropriation, Fund Number 4118, in the amount of $367. Discussion.
$10,000 grant from United Way back when COVID first started for hotel expenses for COVID, either COVID positive patients or people who had been exposed to COVID for quarantine and isolation. That money was then put into our donation account instead of a fund account, so this, we did have somebody that we had to put in a hotel, so we're just appropriating that money as we spend it, and we'll give the rest back to United Way at the end of COVID, whenever that is.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved. Next, we have the Grant Fund 9170.
Make a motion, we approve the grant appropriation of the Vaccine Reimbursement Grant Fund 9170, FY21, in the amount of $80,000.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Vaccine Reimbursement Grant Fund 9170, fiscal year 21, in the amount of $80,000. Discussion.
So this is a reversible grant. We make $28.39 for the first dose and $40 after 315. The prices have kind of changed, but it's just an admin fee for administering the vaccine. It's if their state is able to bill the insurance, so it's not a guarantee, we have no idea how much we'll get in this grant.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions?
With this money that's reimbursable, is this going to cover your expenses and your costs?
We're planning on using it for vehicles, is the plan, but yes. Because right now, we're using our own personal vehicles.
And the vehicles would be used to move equipment and supplies and people and deliver things?
Vaccine clinics, because now we're going off-site because we have to go to the people, so, yeah.
Now, this would not be the line number to purchase a vehicle out of.
Correct. We are, we're not going to spend any of this money, the $80,000, until we reimburse the, actually receive the money.
Okay, but do you want to put it into a four-series number so that you wouldn't have to, you'd have to come back for a transfer if you wanted to purchase a vehicle?
We receive all the money. First.
Okay, so you would have some 319, some, okay. Vehicle might be a little bit, after you spend some, okay, I got you, that sounds good.
Because it may end up being more than 80,000. We have no idea yet. I mean, we've administered 25,000 plus vaccines, but again, it's only if they can collect the insurance money.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have treasure, the Innkeeper's Tax Fund.
Mr. President, I would move that we put on the table Account Number 4920, 3190, for the purpose of the audit, the services related to the collection of the Innkeeper's tax, and then also to the general fund reimbursement.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the appropriation from the county share of the Innkeeper Tax Fund 4920 in the amount of $12,500. Discussion. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello. If you would reference the document that was in your packet, I'm not going to go through that word by word, but I do want to point out some of the highlights of it to kind of give the gist of what we would like to do, and then open it up for any questions about that. So since October of last year, a small committee met to discuss how we might implement audits of the Innkeeper's tax, and this is not auditing hotels, it is auditing their Innkeeper reports that they submit to us monthly, so it's just that piece of it. Audits would entail collecting certain documents, just inspecting those, kind of tracing them back to what has been reported to us. And so we've really spent the last few months talking about how we might do that. I provided the history of when the Innkeeper tax was implemented in 1978, and some of the amendments and changes that have occurred in kind of each decade since then. I know Auditor Plantanga was treasurer in 2010, when the ordinance was amended to include doing such audits, and I believe other counties adopted a similar ordinance. One county that we're aware of, Hendricks County, actually did conduct some audits, and we were able to speak with them and find out how that process went for them, and so that was a very good resource. For many years, though, we have not had issues with the collection of the tax. In the past five years, the collection has grown quite a bit, and we have seen some late payments. So that's kind of our starting point for a reason to audit, but also just the accountability and consistency among the hotels and what, how they are reporting to us. We've had a lot of changeover in the management and the ownership of hotels, and also the, since Airbnb's have come along, a lot of things have changed in that industry. So we think that it's time to do this. We're asking for $10,000. We think the overall cost to audit all 40 facilities in our community is about $60,000, and this is just an estimate. We want to be able to start off and do three to five is what we think could be covered with that first $10,000, and kind of see where we go from there. Maybe we want to speed up the process, depending on what is discovered, maybe we can slow down the process. That's just our goal right now. We would hire a CPA company to conduct these audits, meeting with them, kind of giving them, you know, a basis to go off of. None of the local CPA firms have conducted these audits, but we've also talked to Donovan CPA out of another county and are familiar with the process that they used when they worked with Hendricks County. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Depending on what findings are, we would ask for reimbursement back from the hotels. So the way that we've structured that is if the findings are, say there are no findings, we would not charge them, this $10,000 would pay for it. If we do find findings, maybe $500, $2,000, whatever that may be, we would charge them up to the cost of the audit for that. So if they had findings over $1,500, and that's what the audit cost, we would charge them that. If their findings were $300, we would charge them $300 and not charge them, you know, more than that for such a minimal finding. So that's kind of how we've structured it at this point. I think I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions.
Discussion or questions from Jennifer?
And if I could just, I don't know how much, this is sort of tied to the whole Innkeeper's tax, so the reason this is coming to you a little differently is there was a legislative change in the Innkeeper's tax statute that it used to be that all the Innkeeper's tax revenue that came in then went out to recipient agencies. They lowered DNR's share from 30% to 10% this year, and they've said that 20% can be distributed as directed by the Tippenee County Council. So you've got that 20%, you've also got another request coming before you today to consider for a community marketing project. And so just in terms of getting the money flowing the way you want it, I think this is appropriate for internal expenditures to appropriate, you know, the $10,000 and $2,500 is requested by the treasurer. You're also going to be asked to consider a resolution. The way I've drafted it, it has the amounts requested by the treasurer going to the treasurer, and then the remainder going for the community marketing project for a period of years. So in any case, if this is something you want, I think you can go ahead and move ahead with the appropriation, just knowing in a few minutes, there's going to be a resolution that's going to deal with this and the community marketing piece sort of tied together.
Spent a lot of time doing this, and what this does is this takes the pressure off of the other agencies that receive the money, because if we wouldn't do this, then we would have to go to visit Lafayette, the Community Development Corporation, Profits Town, WREC, the DNR, and probably the county share. We would all have to put something in to do these audits, and to, the $2,500 is to reimburse the county for our attorney's time as well as our time doing this. So I would ask that you support this amount.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we place on the agenda, on the table, Account Number 1148, for other professional services from the auditor's office for the Tippenee County Drug Free Coalition.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, whoever's down there. Barry, to approve the Drug Free Coalition appropriation, 1148, in the amount of $178,757. Discussion.
This is something that's not exactly the auditor, but these are collections that are made by the clerk from the court proceedings, and a little bit of money goes into this fund, and then the Drug Free Coalition uses this money to award grants, and that $178,757 are the grants and other disbursements they're making from this year's collections. And up on the screen, if you want to kind of see the, this is where the money would be going, we've got the organization, and then what was the purpose, you know, Big Brother Big Sisters Youth Monitoring, $11,000, and it just goes through the line here, so you can see where this money is being distributed, and they do the evaluation, obviously it's not the auditor, to go through the evaluation of all the items, and so this will disperse all of the money that was, has been collected basically in the last year. The only exception for the grants are, they have like a little less than $45,000 for the administration of the Drug Free Coalition itself.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have committed reports. And a reminder that we have our budget hearings coming up, so I hope you're working with, meeting with all of your different departments to go over budget reviews, and we do need to, I guess, make an official appointment. Bob, is that what we need to do on this one?
Yeah, if there's just a little bit of question about, and was more on area plan, to officially appoint Jody Hamilton to, to that seat.
For the remainder of?
I believe that goes for the remainder of the term, if I remember right.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to remember, if it was for the term, for Rollins' position, okay. Can we take that by consent, or do we need to have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion for Councilwoman Jody Hamilton to fill the vacated position for area plan commission.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Murray, and a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the council's appointments, with Jody taking over the vacated spot from Councilman Winger, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved, thank you.
You have accepted speech.
Accepted speech. Are you going to give it in her stead, John?
Do we also need to do it for the Wabash River Enhancement, or?
Uh, can you go back to that, Bob? I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, she's, she's got a few of them in there that, go back to the top. So, you got economic development, but that one she was on before, that one.
Yeah, that one.
Right.
That was not necessarily as a councilperson even.
Right. And then the other Wabash River Enhancement Corporation.
And that's a, an annual one. I guess we, we don't necessarily, if you're okay with that.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
But we don't necessarily move and have a full motion on each one of these as we go through them manually for the rest of us.
And I, I have to, have to apologize a little, some of them are going to be, you know, the council president, or designee, and others are going to be the council appointment, so I don't actually remember which one that is. So, I mean, a motion wouldn't hurt anything.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion for Councilwoman Jody Hamilton, for the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation, annual appointment.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the appropriate, or appointment by Jody Hamilton to the seat vacated by Rollins Winger for Wabash River Enhancement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved also, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. All right, we've got a couple of other adjustment item we need to make, Bob.
Yeah, I got, this is something from last month, and this was in the consent agenda in, in July, and in between, when the, when the form was submitted to us, and when we had the council meeting, some of this money was spent, so if just, you can just recognize the difference, what the transfer, we weren't able to transfer as much as what the council did last time, because there wasn't funds available in the part-time and social security, so they requested twenty-three forty-five in part-time, that needs to be sixteen eighty-two and a hundred and twenty-eight dollars, instead of the one seventy-nine for social security, transferred down to office supplies, so this was just in, in a, in a grant, and just recognize that, and I, they're, they're aware of it, and just for you, since you did vote to make that transfer, we weren't able to do that full transfer.
Do we need to make another motion to approve this, or?
Probably would be nice.
All right, just cover bases. I'll make a motion to approve the transfer for the Health Department, for part-time and social security, to office supplies, in the amount presented.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the change in the transfer that occurred for the Health Department as presented, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's approved. All right, are we ready to move on to? Yes, I think we're ready for Innkeeper Tax Presentation. Or, oh, the Sheriff's Commissary? Oh, the property tax, I forgot about that one, I'm trying to move down too quickly, sorry, Bob. All right. Sure. So, we have the Property Tax Levy and Property Tax Cap Impact Report.
There was a statute, I don't have that statute in front of me, that says that the council may go over the maximum levy increase for the next year, and the tax cap credits for the next year. We have notified all of the taxing authorities, I don't think we probably have anyone here, but this is not something that, none of these numbers are, numbers we put together, but you can take comment from, from departments, or from taxing authorities on this, but I just threw a couple of things in the, in the packet. The first thing we have here is the maximum levy growth quotient, which is the six-year non-farm income growth rate, that is determined by the DLGF, and this came from Wes Bennett, who is the commissioner of the DLGF, and kind of in the middle of the page, it is saying the growth quotient for two thousand twenty-two is four point three percent, and that is four point three percent for all levies statewide, will go up by four point three percent, so we did see a, just a by the way sort of thing, our assessed values went up by more than five and a half percent, so if our levy goes up by four point three, and our assessed valuation goes up by five point five, that should mean overall, not individually, but overall, the amount of taxes should go down, you know, marginally. The next report here, these are the tax caps, and this again is, this is from the DLGF website, and they determine the, the impact for two thousand and twenty-two. Their accuracy, these are not real strong, historically, but I believe, was this in your packet? Okay, and you can go through, we just have all the different entities, and we don't have it broken out like general fund, or reassessment, or Cune Bridge, that sort of thing, but we have one point seven eight three six hundred in, for all of the county funds, and it goes through Fairfield Township, and this comes from the state, and I don't know why they don't give a total, they have a total line, but they don't add any of them up, but we have about, a little less than twenty-four thousand for Fairfield Township, Jackson Township, a hundred and twenty dollars, Laramie Township, two-ten, Perry Township, three hundred, Randolph Township, seventy, Sheffield Township, one fifty, a hundred and ten for Shelby, Tippecanoe Township, fourteen eighty, Union Township, sixty bucks, Wabash Township, fifty-one-ten, Washington Township, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty also for Wayne, a little bit less than twelve thousand for Weall Township, City of Lafayette, two point eight million, a little less than one point six million for West Lafayette, Battleground, six thousand, Clarksville, six thousand, Dayton, two eighty, by forty for Shadland, Lafayette School Corporation, about one point nine million, and TSC, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, and West Lafayette Schools, one point three million, Lafayette Library, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, the County Library, a hundred and ninety-three thousand, thirteen thousand for the Tippecanoe County Solid Waste District, the Bus District, two hundred and six thousand five hundred, and then the conservancies do not have any tax back impact, so that is just in total.
So, Bob, I want to make sure I understand this, this is what the tax cap, if there wasn't a tax cap, how much property tax would we get, or what, what is this number exactly?
This, this is how much is written off, basically, from your tax bill, with the one, two, and the three percent buckets.
Okay.
So, if you are, if you're, we don't have any three percent buckets either, but at two percent, if it's a commercial property, your assessed valuation cannot go over two percent of your gross value, so a lot of properties in West Lafayette, the rental properties, those are in the two percent bucket, the tax rate's over two, so this is the difference between what they're going to pay in taxes, and what, if we multiply by the rate, how much it would be.
If we didn't have tax caps?
Yes, so this is lost revenue that's not picked up by anybody, so that's, we do just reduce down the amount of expected property.
So, we can see who's really impacted by the tax caps?
Yes, and almost all of the tax caps are really in the cities, that's where, and you're going to get a little bit, like in Jackson Township, there is a tax cap for some people over sixty-five with income limits, where that says their tax bill can't go up more than two percent. Does that make any difference what your assessed value did? So, you do have some tax caps there, but, you know, obviously, you can see, the cities are what generates all of that, all those credits.
I never, I've never really understood those tax caps. Seems like it goes up three point three, three point four percent every year in West Lafayette.
Well, and, and if, if your tax bill is going up by three point four percent, that means your assessed valuation's going up by three point four percent, because you're staying, you're staying at a standard, two percent of your assessed valuation is your property taxes, so I would think, not to help you out any there, because it's probably going to go up more in two thousand twenty-two, because the assessed valuation rose higher than what they normally do, at least, and we have some new construction, that sort of thing too, but.
Okay. Anything we need to do with this specifically? Is there any public comment regarding our twenty-two estimated property tax caps? Okay, hearing none. Do we need to do anything with the, we had on the agenda, the commissary?
No, you just need, the statute just says the sheriff's to report it to you, and so you just acknowledge that it's been reported.
Okay. All right. We don't have anything else further on that, then we'll move on into our Innkeeper's Tax Presentation.
Good morning, I'm Scott Walker, with Greater Lafayette Commerce, and I'm here to speak about the Innkeeper's Tax that's been legislated to come back to the county this year, and I'll start by just briefly, in two thousand seventeen, we launched a marketing coalition as a community, to help attract people and businesses here, to help us achieve our population goals, and our goals for economic development. We knew at that time that a true marketing campaign would cost millions of dollars, and that we needed to find additional funding sources to accomplish it for the long term. In two thousand and eighteen, Greater Lafayette Commerce started working on discussions with our legislators about the Innkeeper's Tax, knowing that the last time it was approved, it was approved to really fund the water park, which should be, have been paid for around this time, and so we started that discussion in two thousand and eighteen with our elected officials, continued, and knew that two thousand twenty-one is a budget year, we'd want to address the thirty percent that was going to the DNR this year. We hired consultants in Indianapolis to help us with that, and we found sponsors, and Senator, State Senator Buchanan, and State Senator Alting, to sponsor a revision to the Innkeeper's Tax, and were successful in that process, in securing twenty percent coming back to Tippecanoe County, with the idea that it would be used for this marketing campaign, and then also, we've added in the audit procedure as well. The marketing campaign that we have to move forward with, I have a lot of details about that, but essentially, it's really to attract new talent to the community, and also engage with business leaders as they come into the community, and talk about the potential for them to bring facilities here. The, the goals that we have established, and the way that we'll measure this, will be through the social media outreach that we have, through our, our social media brand, as well as the brand that we've created, which the county's adopted for many of the departments, and you'll see it on all of your logos and things as well. And so, so we're really excited about the potential in bringing this to fruition for the community. Right now, I don't know if you know it, we keep track of these things, but there are over seven thousand job openings in Tippecanoe County, and over a thousand of those are manufacturing-related jobs as well, and so we do need to attract those people to the community, there's just not enough talent with COVID and what we're experiencing, we think that more people are falling out of the workforce, and so this is really a critical campaign for the community to move forward with, and we really appreciate your support. I know we're pressed for time, so I can answer any questions that you have about it, but I just wanted to make those comments.
Discussion from council.
Do we have a proposed budget?
We do have, so the Marketing Coalition is made up of Tippecanoe County representatives, as well as representatives of City Lafayette, West Lafayette, Purdue University, Purdue Research Foundation, and Visit Lafayette, and West Lafayette, and they manage that budget, and we do have a budget for the year that I can run through, if you'd be interested. So, there's the talent and business attraction campaigns would be around a hundred and five thousand dollars, the advertising placement and game day sponsorship in partnership with Purdue Athletics would be twenty-seven thousand five hundred, we have additional video work that needs to get done, so that we can be successful in our social media and marketing campaigns, that's twenty-five thousand, we're adopting additional HR recruitment tools to help our HR managers in the community, as they're working to recruit people to come here for jobs, that's fifteen thousand dollars. We have our magazine that's managed by the Greater Lafayette Marketing Coalition as well, that's a break-even enterprise, and so there's no funds budgeted for that, but it is something that we spend money on, but we get revenue from advertisers into it. We have events driven by the Marketing Coalition, so on September fourth, which I think is the Friday before Labor Day, is, will be a Fan Day Experience, and so in partnership with Purdue Athletics, we'll have, as people are coming into the community for the Oregon State kickoff game with Purdue football, we will have a fan experience event. We know a lot of the fans who are Purdue alumni are also business leaders, in their own right, are highly talented and educated people, that would be a great asset for the community, so by sponsoring this Fan Day event, we'll be engaging with that demographic and that group, and having conversations about whether they could be successful here, or their business could be successful, so it's a great partnership with Purdue Athletics, and then we want to sponsor other events in the community as well, with the same idea of engaging visitors in that way. We have some branded promotional items that will get developed, website maintenance, and, and hosting projects, each of those are about fifteen thousand, graphic design, and then outbound, one of the things that we heard going into this was that there's a number of initiatives, you have great fairgrounds as well, and, and some need for additional outbound marketing for the fairgrounds, as well as some opportunities we have with our cities about marketing the downtown areas and sites in the downtown area for development, or just marketing the downtowns for people to come and live, and so we budgeted additional seventy-five thousand for that. Now, that total budget exceeds maybe what we think the forecast is for the Innkeeper's Tax collections, and so we'll fund that out of other sources, or out of Greater Lafayette Commerce Funds.
I apologize, Commissioner Murtaugh sent me.
Hit your button, Kathy.
Commissioner Murtaugh sent me a budget, and I think the total budget was that he sent me was four hundred thousand dollars.
And that, that one has been revised by the Marketing Coalition, and so the, the budget amount now is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Oh, yes, as well, thank you, Commissioner Murtaugh. We did receive additional letters of support from Wabash National Corporation, Subaru of Indiana Automotive, Franciscan Health, all of these companies are working to attract top talent from around the world here, and they're very, very supportive of the Marketing Coalition's work. Kirby Risk Corporation, Visit Lafayette, West Lafayette, sent a letter of support as a coalition member, GE Aviation, their new plant leader, Jordan Weisong, sent a letter of support as well, and as you know, they're trying to attract people with airframe certifications to the community, which is. which is a highly sought-after skill in the U.S. Purdue University Office of Engagement, coalition members, sent a letter of support. And Indiana University Health, along with Franciscan Health, they're working to attract top medical professionals to the community as well. And so this marketing effort that we have that tells our great stories about Greater Lafayette is principally involved with them in their recruitment efforts.
Okay, other discussion. Bob, could you give us an idea, what does the 20% annually typically bring in to the county? Or what would that estimated amount be? Do you know?
If you look on page two of the document, the 10%, gives you the total collection for a five-year period of time, and we're talking about 20% of.
20% of those numbers. So in 2020, which is an odd year because of COVID, it was 387,000. In 2019, 535,000, 18 looks like 546. I'm just rounding these numbers as well. 17 was 516, and 16 was 498.
And the, the forecast for 2021 is, I think, looking a lot like what 2020 was. And so if you, if you think about three-quarters of what 2019 would be.
There you go. I always forget to do that. Congratulate you guys, the group, the Marketing Coalition, because you, I know you've been working on this for a few years. You've done some great things during those years, and being able to pull that group together and then have all these support letters to support you is, is wonderful. So I think the 20% being added on to this and these efforts is going to completely enhance what the Marketing Coalition is, is trying to do, and, and I would love to see that happen. So good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So just, go ahead.
So back in 2019, when I joined the council, we were looking at finding money for the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation as a way to attract people to the community and enhance the community. Where are we with this? And I realize this is, is that another way, where, where are we with this? Do we know as a council where we are with that? It seems like that kind of dropped two years ago. Does anyone know? Thanks.
Was that part of the innkeeper's tax discussion before?
No, we were looking at doing a restaurant tax at one point. That got dropped, and I'm just, it seems like, I haven't heard anything else about it. I didn't know if anyone, okay.
Reporting, reporting of the innkeeper's tax, is that just a honorary report? They actually go down, redo the numbers and stuff like that? Were they, how do they know how much I was, how to send them?
Thank you, council.
It is self-reported, like income tax or anything else, hence the concept for doing the audits.
Scott, I do have a question for you, if you don't mind coming back up, please. So my understanding is that the budget amount that you're asking for is $437,000. So looking at the resolution, which is a multi-year component, assuming an increase in revenues and assuming, you know, people flock back to our community, there's a potential for more than that, the 20%. Looking at the, the budget and the difference there, I almost wonder, is there an opportunity for that extra amount outside of the $437,000 to maybe do something different with or maybe allocate differently? I mean, I'm not opposed whatsoever to supporting the $437,000. I think it's a phenomenal initiative. Obviously, it's a wealth of community support. I just think it's an opportunity maybe to look at that additional, if we get there, that hundred-plus thousand dollars, whatever, maybe reuse that elsewhere potentially.
Sure.
Could you comment on that, please?
Absolutely, and that is, so, so our, our budget's $437,000, we're anticipating per year. And so over, over two years, there could be excess funds. I think that would be then the prerogative of the county commissioners to maybe come with another proposal for you to spend that money on, and it could be used for other things in the community. And that was always the goal. We went after the 30% that the DNR had with the idea that then 20% of it could be used for the Marketing Coalition in an ongoing way. And then that other 10%, which in a good year would be around $270,000, could be used for other projects in the community that enhance the community for economic development and tourism type things.
And it might just, this is conceptually just different than anything else you do. So the resolution's structured not in the way you normally see, but the background is, the way the statute is set up, it says, you know, innkeeper's tax of so much will be imposed, 5%, and whatever comes in of that amount, so before these amendments, of that amount, you know, 40% goes to GLC, 40% goes to the visitor's center, 10% goes to REC. And you're not paying bills out of that, you're not monitoring it, you rely on those organizations to, just to budget for themselves. Here, they pulled 20% out and said, instead of us saying where it's distributed, county council, you can say where it's distributed. So in essence, it's like you're inserting your own line into that statute, saying another 20% goes to GLC for this purpose. But, but the bills aren't going to come to the county, the county's not going to pay those out, except for the bit that you carved out for auditors, and so that all becomes internal. But the rest of it is just getting distributed pretty much in the same manner the rest of the innkeeper's tax is. So if in the future, I mean, there's kind of a handshake deal, but just like the, the state legislature could come back next year and say, you know what, we're taking all of it. You're kind of in the same position. You could jump in in two years and say, we're going to adjust these percentages. But, so you're, you're, I guess I'm just trying to say, you're stepping in the shoes of the Indiana General Assembly on how that percentage is being directed. If that makes sense to you.
So we could decide however we want as a body to spend that money?
Yeah, I would say, this might be semantics, how to distribute the money. Spending is a little different. You're not entering into contracts with anybody, so you're not spending it on, say, the video promotion yourself. You're saying, that's a great, yeah, so I mean, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but it's just a little different.
So would that be a reason we don't want to put it as part of our overall annual budget plan that we're doing at that end of the month?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand you. I don't think you're budgeting this.
Right, so that's why we wouldn't want to do that? I, I'm just thinking, we, we've got a pool of money, right? And now we're deciding where to distribute this money, and we're being asked to distribute it to this marketing plan. Do we have any, are we looking at any other options? Should we be looking at any options as, as a body?
That's above my pay grade, but you could.
And I guess I'm asking the council that, and just, have we thought about that?
Well, and that, I think that's a, a good point. I think, you know, as it's written, you know, 20% should be distributed. And, and, and I, and you know, when I initially heard this, I thought, wow, look at our fairgrounds. I mean, there's needs that we have. Could we do something with this money ourselves? And when we look in currently in 2021, year-to-date, there's two quarters that have been given, it's $304,000. Year-to-date is the 20% that has been collected from innkeepers right now. So if it's $437,000 and we think there could be more, should we say, okay, let's fund $437,000, and then anything over $437,000 would come back to the county? And the county then could distribute it as we needed to, maybe for the fairgrounds. But I think this is, this is good discussion, because this is something, you know, that we haven't talked about. And should this be something that the council sets up a committee? And during budget hearings, we talk about this, and then come back in September and address this resolution.
Commissioner Murtaugh, it was waving me down, if it's all right with the council.
So I think to partially address your question, Lisa, so the, the difference between this pot of money and all the rest of the funds that you deal with is, you know, those are funds that are allocated directly to the county, and that's what you do during the budget cycle. Whereas this is truly the community's money. So in other words, I wouldn't, would, I would be reluctant to try to move forward with county projects with this money. In other words, we want buy-in from the entire community on any projects that these funds would be spent on, because obviously it's, it's, this isn't just a tax rate for, for county's use. It is truly a plan for the entire community as a whole. So we'd want, you know, the cities to, both cities to buy in and that type of thing. And that's why it was, we got the, we reached out to not only the Marketing Coalition, who worked on this diligently, but also to the community as a whole to get support letters in regard to that. Does that make sense?
So it's considered more a community pot of money because that's the way that, because.
Exactly.
The statue was, that's the way the statue was designed, because it's an innkeeper's tax.
Exactly, and I'll defer to Doug as, as counsel, but I mean, the, the legislation basically states that this body is the one that makes the decision how it's allocated. But I would just want to state that this is different than most other funds, and that's why we don't actually budget it, per se, like we do all the rest of our funds. And that it's just, it's community, so in other words, I would be reluctant to say, oh yeah, we should use leftover money for the fairgrounds, because that's not, you know, that's not, that's more county-related and not community as a whole related, so.
I guess my question, though, to your point, Commissioner Murtaugh, is the fact that when I listened to, on a Zoom meeting, the Ways and Means Committee, and when DNR was upset because they were going to lose their 30%.
Right.
And they realized they were going to get 10%. And the comment was made, and the sense of the committee was, well, you know, you can develop a resolution, or you can go to the county council and ask for the money for a specific project, and they will distribute the money to you if they choose to distribute the money, if they look at that project. So my thought is that, you know, the fairgrounds is the same thing as a project that, it's a community project. And if the fairgrounds is coming, if the Fair Board is coming, if somebody's coming and saying, we have this project, could you fund that?
In that case.
That's very similar to what the sense of that committee at the State House was saying.
So certainly, and so, and you know, how we would envision this in the future as, you know, as the pandemic moves away and, and this fund goes back to normal, and, and we have additional funds, that there be sort of a grant, a community grant process, you know, so if folks need a project that can be, that can be funded out of this, then they put that forth, and then that be included in the plan that's submitted to you. So definitely, but, you know, we, we just don't want to, you know, we'd want that community buy-in for that. So I think that any grant that might be considered, you know, that there be, required that there be letters of support, just like you would for any other type of grant that might, might be considered in the future.
And so that's why, when you think about something, limiting the funds up to $437,000, then putting the money in so that there is money there, that then the council could look at a presentation very similar to what we're seeing right now to get community buy-in for a special project that we see out there. But I guess this is, you know, more discussion needs to happen on this.
And I would, again, kind of reflecting back on former councilman Winger's parting comments of having a process or a groundwork or kind of guiding principles to make those decisions. So as extra funds are there outside of the $437,000, I would recommend a, a subcommittee to be developed and meet and kind of create that framework of what a community project is and isn't. So that way, there's kind of a, a guide to lead decisions down the road of how that money is spent for the community here locally. That'd be kind of my opinion on, on that aspect of it.
Thank you.
Further discussion, motion, what's the pleasure of the council?
And I, I don't know what you guys want to do with it, just saying, I sent this resolution, which I think does what's been asked of you today in terms of how the money flows. I think we get it quarterly, and so the next, so the statute became effective July 1st, and so July, August, and September will be accumulated, and then I think it'd be early October when that money actually hits the county account. So I don't know, you might be holding up somebody else's planning, but this resolution wouldn't affect the distribution of dollars if it was passed next month rather than this one.
You're right, Doug, the, the commission will approve the distributions, I think, the third week of October.
So then I guess we need to decide, and please correct me if my perception and what I'm hearing is inaccurate, is for the six months of this year of collections, assuming this resolution passes, up to $437,000 would go to this Marketing Coalition, or is that for us to decide later on? Or I guess I'm, I'm trying to pick off what everybody has said, comment-wise, and how to, and get clarification on it.
Well, and then squaring that with how the resolution currently reads, right?
Yeah, I guess two points. There's no, like, not to exceed amount in this resolution as drafted. And then, I mean, you're only getting half a year's worth of, of revenue for 2021.
Only a quarter of the revenue.
No.
Because you go.
Oh, I see, yeah, no, Bob's pointing out that you're not going to get the fourth quarter's money until.
2022.
2022. I mean, we can work through those if I know what you want to do, but in terms of the language of the resolution.
Just clarification for Scott. The $437,000, is that what you're anticipating for '21, '22, and '23?
That's a, that's an annual, so from July 2021 to June, and then July to, so that would be $437,000 for what would be July 1 to June 30, each of those periods. And so that's the number.
You don't anticipate that number increasing in '22 and '23 based on price increases of things, or?
Well, that, that could be, and we haven't, we haven't forecasted, forecasted out if there will be price increases. But we'd certainly work with you all, and, and the goal, again, was to have excess money that could be spent on other projects as well, right? And at some point in time, we'll go back after that 10% from the DNR as well.
Question, Scott, is it going to be a hardship if this were to be tabled this month and, and brought up and approved next month for you and what your plans are?
Yeah, we, we are starting spending, so I would encourage you to approve it this month. That would be a lot easier for the Greater Lafayette Commerce Organization.
You're not wanting to spend it now, though, are you? Because I mean, we cannot distribute it more than quarterly.
Right, right, but if we have this, we know this resolution is approved by the council.
To know that it's coming.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, council, let's.
Thank you.
I need a motion or, or some sort of, something to work off of.
I guess my opinion, I'll share my opinion, is for the rest of '21, okay, so this current year, I'd be in favor of, you know, the rest, the quarterly distribution to go in full, whatever that amount is, to Greater Lafayette Commerce. And then for '22 and '23, for length of resolution, have it up to $437,000 in total. And Bob, maybe I'm, I'm mixing years and fiscal years and calendar years, but at least to kind of get the ball rolling, so that we don't hinder their process and what they have planned for the upcoming months, and that September, it's the fourth event. That'd be my opinion, and then we can maybe address this, maybe have that committee meet, or create that committee to kind of get more into the weeds of when an excess does occur, how are we going, how are we going to utilize that? If that makes sense or not.
What you're saying is that the October distribution would go to them, and then Q4 of this year, and then three quarters of '22 would go to Greater Lafayette Marketing Coalition, not to exceed $437,000. And then if there is excess, it would go to a county account for then other community organizations to request the money. And then the same thing for '23, for '37, and then it would go from there.
Yes, that'd be my opinion, yes.
And it's okay to put the excess in a different account, correct?
Yeah, so the way it's set up now is that the money's going to go into the county share inkeeper's tax fund. And if you don't spend it, it'll just be there so you can make further distributions. Because the commissioners set up a separate county inkeeper's county share fund to hold this 20%. And so I think whatever doesn't, whatever you haven't directed the distribution of will be there for whenever you want to use it. You'd have to do a new resolution to direct that further.
Do we want to go '21, '22, and '23, or just '21 and '22?
I'd like to see it go to '23.
Yeah. Think a three-year plan probably would be the best.
Yeah.
So if you're doing the marketing plan, you need, we need to do an investment for a long time to get the return. I get that. I wish that this had come to us with a little bit more time for us to look at and understand. I know that we had a presentation of the marketing, but the financials, it seems like this is really, and maybe other people have been more in the loop than me. I don't know, I've tried to stay in the loop. It seems a little bit like, I personally could use another month to think about this and talk to people about it. It's a lot of money to spend. If we're going to do it, we need to do it for three years, is what I'm saying. I don't want us to say like, well, let's just give them some money for now. I think if you're doing your marketing plan, you do it, and you spend the money, and you go full force, otherwise you're wasting your money.
I would not like to see it be tabled. I'd like to see it a motion today, mainly because, you know, companies are already struggling out there in having these funds and putting these events on to attract talent to this community for those positions is extremely important to the, to this community. So I'd like to see it. So I'm in support of what you're saying, Ben.
So if we approve the resolution as written today, Doug, we could then come back and decide months down the road how to distribute said funds?
Or do we need, do we need an amendment to the resolution to be able to do what Ben's talking about?
Yeah, if you want to, I've got language I can suggest to you if you want to do that 437 cap. And I think the way to go, if that's what you want to do, is to pass it as amended today. And then I can get a clean copy of that to the auditor for signature, but. So that would be my recommendation to amend it if you want to do how Ben suggested. You can certainly move forward with the motion as presented, and I mean, it's open to amendment in the future if you want to.
So the, we could, as a point of order, set a motion to approve the amended resolution with a cap of $437,000, and that would encompass what we're discussing.
So let me just tell you what I've got scratched out, if I can read my writing. So I think what you're saying is that, so if you look at the, at the second, so you got the now, therefore be it resolved paragraph, and then you've got a be it further resolved. So if you amend that second be it further resolved paragraph to say, be it further resolved that after distributing the amounts, if any, allocated to the treasure and general fund, for the year 2021, the remainder of money in said fund should be distributed to GLC to promote the community marketing in Poughkeepsie County, to enhance the economic development of the county. And for the years 2022 and 2023, the remainder of the money in said fund shall be so distributed in an amount not to exceed $437,000.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution for what legal counsel has just described with the amendment.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vernon, to approve resolution. Do we have a resolution number on this one?
Yeah, it's 2021-31-CL.
So it'd be resolution number 2021-31-CL to approve the inkeeper's tax distribution as outlined just here before us. Further discussion?
Just to make sure that I'm understanding this right, so our one distribution that we would make in 2021, which would be the first part of October, all the money would go to them with the exception of $12,500. And then in '22, we will make, we probably would start again at the $12,500, the first one in April. And then they would receive everything else until we reach that $437,000 mark.
Yeah, that's.
And then the rest of the money would stay in there if we did exceed that number.
That's right. That's how I've described it.
Okay, okay.
Would the quarter four distribution be in January? The quarter four 2021 distribution, would that be in January?
Yes, it should be, yes. Once, once the quarter ends, then we would do it. As quickly as, I'm not sure how quickly the, the inkeeper's reports, because it would be collections through December 31st, and when do you get those? Of, so it might be like February.
Well, the commission, the commission approves it the next month, at the, after the end of the quarter, the third week when we meet, the commission meets at visitors. Yeah, whatever, yeah, treasurer receives, then we get it, and we approve it.
So they would receive the quarter three and quarter four distributions? Right? Is that how I'm understanding that?
Quarter four distribution would be in January.
Right, agree. But I mean, I'm looking, looking at it a little bit, the 2021, six months.
Right. The final two quarters of 2021.
Yep.
And then moving forward.
Kind of start over.
In '22.
Yeah.
With the 437.
Okay.
But we would withhold this, the full 12, 5, out of the first, the only payment in '21.
Correct.
Okay.
Are we all clear? Is that?
I got one question. So if by chance we don't get that much, do we have language in there protecting us that we won't be able to distribute that much if we, if that much doesn't come in?
Yeah.
Because of a off-year or whatever?
Yeah, it says distribute remainder and, and a not to exceed amount.
Okay.
So that language there, and then Bob's pretty good about not giving money he doesn't have, so I think it all.
Just want to make sure. All right, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved, as amended. Okay. Next up, we have Commissioner FYI.
Good morning again. Thank you for that. Just, I'll be really, really brief. On 8/26, we'll be having a department head launch here 11:30 in this room, so hopefully you can join us for that. It'll be mainly to update our department heads on some changes within IT. Also, it's hard to believe, but it's already that time that I talk to you about legislative issues. We have our first Legislative Agenda Committee meeting next week. And so if you have any issues in which you feel need to be addressed, please reach out. I know we'll be dealing with some issues in regard to highway department and utilities and that type of thing. So several other things will, will rise to that level as well. Good news, bad news? The bad news is Allen Nail officially retired at the end of last month. Allen did a great job for our Parks Department. We're going to sorely miss him, not only as a department head, but as a friend to county government. We wish him the best in retirement. Also want to congratulate Randy Lauer. If you have not met Randy, Randy's in the audience here. And he will be taking over the helm there, and so we wish him the best of luck and most, and will be glad to, happy to support him. Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you, and welcome, Randy. We have next meeting, obviously, two weeks, we have budget hearings, and then our public hearing on the evening of September 2nd. Any other, other than obviously, then we'll do our final approvals of budget in our September meeting? So, public comment? Hearing done, last motion?
Oh, any, any update on the American Rescue Plan funding? It's a lot of money.
Bob and I had a meeting with a company that is getting us some information about potentially helping us with that. Like I reported last month, it's ever-changing. So we are waiting on that, and as soon as we get that, we'll pull the committee together.
So we don't think we'll have that in time for the budget hearings, more?
Well, the only thing we were talking about budgeting was the actual lost revenue, you know? And the, it looks like our lost revenue will be zero. So there will be no lost revenue to consider a budget.
What, what the State Board of Accounts has said about the lost revenue is maybe just the way our calendar kind of went. You have to look at the revenue as a whole compared to 2019. So you're looking at the 2020 revenue compared to 19. You're looking at '21, I believe, compared to 19. Starting in 2020 was the lit public safety tax. So that really came back and hurt us as far as being able to capture that lost revenue because we're looking at county revenue as a whole. So that kind of blew that out of the water, that even if we lost revenue, we gained this new revenue that negated the loss. So, you know, it's money that we're having and we're going to be using within the community, but it's not something that we can keep ourselves as, as lost revenue.
Anything else?
I just want to make a quick comment. I don't know if most of you attended the fair in July, end of July, but I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to Andy Klein, because that was the, one of the first biggest event at the fairgrounds, which was wonderful. And him and his team really, I saw him running around all week long, everywhere, doing things. So they, he really did a great job. So I just want to say that, you know, make sure to tell him that if you see him around. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jody. Good comment. Anything else? If not, I'll take the last motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.